Thank you all for being here today. I am State Representative Samantha May from House District 40B, Representative. I am here today as Chair of the People of Color and Indigenous Caucus. We are where we are today, right now, because of the tragic deaths of George Floyd, Dante Wright, and most recently Winston Smith, and the many Black and Brown men and women whose lives have been shortened by police officers. The Posse Caucus has been on the front lines of the legislature to get meaningful police accountability measures through the door. We simply don't want bad policing. We don't want a rigged system that leaves families searching for answers on what happened to their loved ones at a time when we have the global community asking for change to better policing. Senate Republicans are at a standstill. As we work for public safety that places respect and preservation of human life and dignity, at the forefront, we have been met with strong opposition from the do-nothing Senate Republicans who want nothing but the status quo. Right now, we are at a critical juncture. As we work to finish session, we are working all avenues to get police accountability measures through the door. We are calling all our allies, leaders, colleagues, and the public to help us make this push for meaningful police reform. The Governor received thirty items of proposals to the post board from the Posse Caucus he can implement under his executive authority in our proposal to invest in public safety that works for all communities. We are optimistic to see the Governor's commitment on helping us get this through, and we expect his plan for action under his executive power to meet the moment for better and safer policing where Senate Republicans have failed. Today, we have the Public Safety and Judiciary Team of the Posse Caucus to walk us through our proposal and our plan of action for the next couple of days. I can say here that our team has been foundational in forging a pathway through tough times, especially when working with our colleagues from across the aisle. We want the community input, need the community support to help us in this stretch. Next, we will have members of our own Posse Caucus speak on the call to action and close to question and answer time.
It is afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Very few things are more important than personal and community safety from harm. As Chair of the House Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice Reform, I am committed to lawmaking that recognizes the core function of our government to provide for the safety of each and every citizen and resident of our state. Each and every. George Floyd was not safe in public on that fateful day in May last year. Dante Wright was not safe in public two months ago. Fernando Castillo was not safe in public four years ago. Each and every, under the law, should have met these three Black men. Today, we're speaking because in the course of negotiating with the Senate over the public safety omnibus bill, the Senate has not accepted this proposition in the form of meaningful police accountability proposals the House brought forward. We brought accountability reforms for traffic stops, sign and release warrants, wrongful death civil liability limitations, citizen-based review councils, body camera policy changes, regulating no-knock warrants, community decision-making for community-based interventions, and only no-knock warrant changes are presently in agreement in the omnibus bill negotiations. That is not nearly good enough. It's time for the Senate majority to get serious, to get serious about defending the constitutional rights of each and every human being in Minnesota, and that includes Black men and women. The Minnesota House principle is simple but powerful, and one where decent, common-sense people agree with us. Good public safety is for everyone. Accountability is good public safety. Good public safety funds law enforcement, and it funds community's interventions. Right now, this bill, with all its other good provisions, doesn't achieve this principle. The law needs to be serious about accountability, or it is not serious about public safety. It's time for the Minnesota Senate to get serious and keep its promise for meaningful police accountability.
So there's been this false idea perpetuated by the Senate Republicans, as well as the House Republicans, that the proposals we're bringing forward are somehow unreasonable or extreme. They are not. Many of these things are already law in other states, not just blue states, also in red states, and we will be bringing amendments to the public safety bill tomorrow, and those will include the language regarding pretextual stops, the kind of language that may have protected Dante Wright. We will be bringing that forward, and it's a bill that's been carried by Representative Cedric Fraser, as well as language on sign and release warrants. We have engaged thoroughly with law enforcement to make sure that these things are keeping everybody safe, and they are. They will keep our communities safer. They actually make police safer, but the Senate refuses to listen to that. Finally, we will be bringing an amendment to change the statute of limitations on wrongful death lawsuits, to set that at six years, like it is for many other things. This is really about making sure that the families who are impacted by police violence have an opportunity to be heard. It is not changing the way that we make those decisions. It's just giving people time to be heard. That is what the community needs and wants from us, and it is completely reasonable that we do that. The Senate has not been able to even hold hearings. They have refused to hold hearings on these things. They have refused to listen to the public, and we have been listening to the public. We are listening to our constituents. Minnesota is ready for these reforms. Our constituents are ready for these reforms, even if the Senate is not, and that's why we will continue to fight for these reforms until they do become law. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Chair. I appreciate that. Laying those things out. I'm Cedric Fraser, District 45A, State Representative and Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee. You know, we're here for one reason, plain and simple, because our GOP colleagues in the Senate have failed to act on things they said they would act on. They said that they would put police accountability in this bill, police reform in this bill. They have not done so. This agreement that we have now does not nearly include what we need to make sure that all Minnesotans are going to be safe and make sure that we have a public safety system that is good for all Minnesotans. Unfortunately, what I have to tell you today is that I believe that my GOP Senate colleagues made a political calculation. The calculation that they made is that this narrative of high crime rates, particularly villainizing the city of Minneapolis, but this narrative is one that they believe is going to help them win elections in 2022. So what they've done by doing that is, they've put the interests of an election certificate over the interests of protecting lives of Minnesotans. They've put the interests of an election certificate over the lives of having accountability when a Minnesotan loses their lives in our streets by someone from law enforcement. We are not here because we are putting the interests of an election certificate over the lives of Minnesotans. We are here because we've heard from the community, because we've done our job this entire session, and we continue to do our job during this special session. We are here because the community demands that we have accountability and reform, and we will continue to do that in these last few hours of this special session to make sure that we have a final product with the amendments that were just mentioned can be signed into law by the Governor and also be adopted by our Senate. We believe these are very common-sense measures. As Chair Becker-Fern mentioned, they are in other states, and it has not caused crime to rise. In fact, it has caused crime to go down. We've seen officers be able to focus more on serious crimes when you implement these type of common-sense reforms. We've seen more accountability when you implement these types of common-sense reforms. We're going to do our diligence. We're going to do our hard work, and we're going to keep pushing for the rest of this special sessions, for the hours that we have left, to make sure that we continue to fight to have police reform and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Esther Egbadji. I represent House District 59B, which covers the areas of downtown Minneapolis and parts of the North Side. So one thing that many of our communities have been crying out for is police accountability. And despite the work of our members on the Public Safety Committee, this agreement did not have what we needed, and that is because of the Senate Republicans who have stalled. They have not met us. They have not met the moment. And so now, we have a bill that leaves out the specific cries of our community for at least the past year since George Floyd and Dante Wright. We are working hard to meet that moment, and we will continue to be working through the amendments that we've discussed. And because this bill is not yet final, we will do all that we can to obtain meaningful police accountability measures that can end up in the final product. All of these measures were discussed on the House floor, and they're similar to the types of measures that we do ask of other licensed professionals. We have stringent rules for doctors, for lawyers, for teachers, cosmetologists, truck drivers, pilots, you name it. And when they do something wrong, there's regulation and rules to hold them accountable, as well as to prevent future harms. But the policing as we know it is killing too many of our neighbors. And if we truly love one another and see each other as neighbors and friends and as one Minnesota, then we must reflect that through this bill. So we can't stop fighting because we all deserve to live in a safe society, and so that is what we will continue to do. Thank you.
I'm here again, at the podium again, except for this time, I want to make sure that you understand that I choose my words very carefully. So I did notice that Flores Olson tweeted out John Thompson attacked the Governor. Let's be clear, I never attacked the Governor. You missed everything that I said, and so I'm going to repeat it again. Please, give me one second. I'm going to repeat it again so that you can hear me loud and clear, because people get mad at my words. I get mad at the actions. Again, I'm clear what I'm saying. Thousands of Minnesotans demanded significant police accountability measures to prevent future deaths of Black and Brown Minnesotans. These police accountability measures have been utilitarian, blocked by our Senate Republicans, none of whom represent the areas that are impacted by poor policing. The Posse Caucus and the DFL legislators have put forth dozens of accountability measures that would ensure all Minnesotans are safe in their communities. If there's no meaningful accountability measures, there would be more tragic deaths, which would likely lead to more protests, which would likely lead to more unrest. The Governor has the authority to influence the rulemaking process of this. He has to stand with the average Minnesota who wants police reform. These are common-sense police accountability measures, supported by the majority of Minnesota, and surprisingly, police officers support these measures. I'll say this, though. The status quo is more dangerous than any protester on this dog on earth. And I'll say this again, so that Flores can please share this with your audience. Underinvestments in my community, the underinvestments in education, the underinvestments in housing, I watched the homeless be evicted from outside, right down the street from our state Capitol, the underinvestments in jobs and economic development, everything you're underinvesting in puts me in a community full of crime, and then you tell me the only thing we could do is give you more police. I'm not the anti-police politician, and neither are these people. We don't want to defund the police. Can I go on the record saying that I never said, and neither have any of my colleagues? Neither of any one of our colleagues said, "defund the police." Stop playing politics with our lives. Now, last thing I'll say is, don't wait until I'm shot in the head. Don't wait till somebody blow my brains out and Martin Luther King, me and my family, because what I'm saying right now Martin Luther King was asking for. Investments in the Black community, we need more than just police. We need more than just judges and prosecutors. We need strong investments. We have brilliant Black kids in our community. I am not somebody who you should fear, but if you fear progress, then you should fear me, because there's more John Thompsons coming. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Patricia Torres Ray. I'm a State Senator representing District 63 in the Minnesota Senate. And yes, I want to clarify for you and the public that the Senate Republican majority does not want accountability. The Senate minority and the Posse Caucus in the Senate actually do want accountability, and we are responding to what the public is asking us to do. And I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here, but I would like to put this in context right now, so we understand, that you understand, and that you help us deliver the message about why we need police accountability today. In this bill that they negotiated, we have major investments in multiple issues that really do not respond to the question and to the ask that Representative Thompson actually is asking for. And I'm going to give you a major example of this. He talks about homelessness. Do you know how much money is in these bills to address mitigation, to put in place a mitigation plan for homelessness? Twelve thousand dollars this year and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the next year. That's what is in here for the mitigation of homelessness in the entire state of Minnesota for our communities. But I am going to tell you how much money is here for corrections, where many of our people are incarcerated. Many Black men, many Latino men, many Indigenous people are incarcerated, and many of our youth. Do you know how much money is in this bill for incarcerating our people? Four hundred and sixty-nine million. Twelve thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-nine million dollars is what was negotiated in this bill. Out of that money, excuse me, that four hundred and sixty-nine million is just for incarceration, but the corrections budget is six hundred and forty million, six hundred and forty million. I can read to you many of these provisions, and I would like to encourage you to review that. We have retention of domestic violence program for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so it goes on. The minimal investments that are being made in this bill are totally inadequate. So we are left here as people of color and Indigenous people with one choice, asking for accountability of the only system that is being funded in this bill, which is law enforcement. That's what we are asking for, and that's what we want you to understand, that we want a better system in place for our families, and that we want a better investment in our communities that works on prevention. I hope that that is the message that you are going to help us deliver today. Thank you.
Questions?
Chair Mariani, Democrats control two thirds of the situations in Governor's office in the House. Why is it that Senate Republicans appear to be getting their way to that goal?
Well, because it takes two bodies of the legislature to forward legislation to the Governor. That's the mechanical answer, but it's a true answer in terms of we need to negotiate in good faith with one another. It's also because the House's proposition, and I said it in my proposal, is that we're not here to do one side of what it takes to keep Minnesota safe. We're not here to do just one side of what it takes to deal with crime. We're here to do everything that's needed to keep Minnesota safe. That means that we invest in law enforcement. That means that we equip law enforcement, and it also means we hold law enforcement accountable, and it also means that we invest in citizens, in community, intervening to stop violence and to stop crime, and the preventions that Senator Torres Ray just said. So think about it. We're in the middle of a conversation. The House comes in in good faith and says, you know, we got to do all this stuff, and the Senate says, oh, great, we'll put a ton of money in cops, but we don't want to do this other stuff that we need to keep Minnesota safe. And so we're having a conversation, and we don't want to play brinkmanship with this stuff because public safety is way too important for that, and we say, you know what? That's okay. Let's keep that conversation going then, and then the conversation stops. That's the reality on the ground as we interact with this other body, and the issue is, even though the House has been very public about everything that we've laid out and engaging the public, we're having these conversations after all that public in a quiet, respectful space, and unfortunately, the public is not seeing that response on the part of the Senate. So therefore, this gathering today to shine a light on the one-sided, one-dimensional approach of the Senate relative to this all-important issue that we face.
Quick follow-up. Will this come to brinkmanship? How far are you willing to go to hold up the public safety bill? Are you willing to go pass the Wednesday amendment?
That's a great question for the Senate. All we've been debating are provisions that the House brought forward. Look at the Senate bill. Look at the House bill. Look at the hearings we had at the House. Look at the proposals that we brought in. Look at a Senate that didn't even have one hearing on the preeminent issue of our day, not one. So ask the Senate that question. We are prepared to do what we need to do to save the lives of Minnesotans. We prefer to do that through legislative action because it should be in the law, and if it can't happen there, it's going to happen somewhere else as well. But ask the Senate that question. This isn't about brinkmanship. This is about the safety of each and every Minnesotan.
Chair, there are plans to withhold votes on the public safety bill if these amendments don't aren't adopted or any changes coming any other way. Are there plans to withhold votes?
We're not organizing the holding votes issue. That's a question for each and every member of the body.
Is anybody planning to vote against the bill if these amendments don't go on? Anybody planning to vote against the bill in the House floor? No?
Chair Mariani, thank you. DSC Commissioner Paulson told me that if this budget doesn't pass, he's got a week, possibly two, to keep the prison doors locked, keep prisoners inside. Nobody knows how difficult this agreement was to reach, more than you. If there are any of these amendments adopted, knowing what you know about the delicacy of these negotiations, does it throw this agreement out the window? And are you worried about what the impact of that could actually be if it happens?
Well, I am worried of the Senate's obstinacy, of the Senate's inability to deal with reality. Again, that's a question for the Senate. We have demonstrated transparently and consistently a balanced approach to make sure that we keep all Minnesotans safe. That's not happening on the Senate side. You know, if they want to play brinkmanship in order to whatever, you know, which results in Minnesotans not being safe because we're not investing in communities, because we're not holding police officers who are killing our citizens on routine traffic stops, that's for the technical answer.
Chair Mariani, are there any of these proposals that got the support of the Chiefs and Sheriffs and P O A and still didn't get sent Republican?
I would say this. My door and our committee and our committee members has always been open to law enforcement. We don't legislate onto people. We legislate with our people, and that includes the professionals in our law enforcement community. We have held steady, constant conversations with them up to this day. We've made progress in terms of changing the nature of that list of proposals that I laid out. Many of those changes are informed by the professionals in law enforcement who get it, who want to get it right. And so whether they're fully supportive of the proposals in the end, you need to ask them. I'm not going to speak for them. You know, there's got to be a hesitancy because change, you know, is difficult, but this isn't change being done onto. This is change being done informed by, and it's a fair question. I would ask law enforcement on that issue, and I would ask the Senate why they're not having those kind of conversations with law enforcement. It seems irresponsible.
So if these ideas don't pass, then you would want to see the Governor have them with his executive authority? Have you talked to him about that yet, once he's said?
We certainly want to see that, and I'm not going to speak for the Governor. We've had some very powerful and meaningful conversations, particularly of late, on this. We've laid out an agenda for the executive branch. They're looking at that super seriously. We're encouraged. We prefer, we're lawmakers. We prefer to do this through legislation. That's what the people deserve. But you know what the people also deserve in the end, the result and the outcome, they deserve to be safe. And if it's going to take executive branch action to do that, then so be it. The Governor has a responsibility, not to the House, not to the body, not to the Democratic Party, not to the Republican Party. He has a responsibility to the Minnesota State Constitution. We cannot have anyone, including law enforcement, violating the constitutional rights of Minnesotans. It's just not, can we agree on that? And so it's a great question. It is one of the things that we are pursuing. We are committed to helping Minnesota get to a safe place one way or the other.
Just a follow-up on Theo's question from before. I want to make sure I understand. Will any of you vote for the bill the way it's presently constituted without the additional reform you're looking for? Will any of you, do any of you plan to vote?
It is my bill. I'll be voting for the bill, and I certainly would understand why lots of other folks will not vote for the bill.
What about the rest of you? A show of hands, how many of you plan to vote for the bill the way it is now?
I don't think that's a fair question because that isn't the bill that we'll be passing off the House floor. We have to go through the legislative process. There are amendments filed. There will likely be amendments to the amendments, and we will all be making, as all legislators always do, their independent decisions about the right thing to do in that moment. It's a good bill with a lot of good provisions that will help a lot of people.
And I understand that, but my question was, the way the bill is written now, if the Senate doesn't accept any of your amendments, would you vote for the bill the way it is now? That's the question.
Again, as we've said before, that's a question for the Senate. We're asking the Senate to step up and meet us in this moment, and that's what we're expecting them to do.
Can you walk us through the next forty-eight hours? On this public safety bill, let's say the House passes a bill that has amendments that includes some of these changes, gets sent to the Senate, what happens next?
It's up to the Senate.
Why did you let this agreement proceed? Did the Speaker intervene here and take it over? Or as concerned as you are about the lack of these provisions, why didn't you just
There's still not a hundred percent agreement on the bill. It was quite obviously presented here. There's a lot of rigor and a lot of very important things. We kept the door consistently open. We heard messages from the Chair on the other side of done negotiating, totally unacceptable. We never adopted that posture, and if at some point it's impossible for the Chairs to get beyond a certain point, then it's absolutely appropriate for our leadership to engage with one another to see how we can keep moving the bill forward. That's what's going to happen.
Last question.
Did the negotiations, Representative Fraser, Representative Mariani, get taken from you at some point in the last week by leadership and the Governor's office to negotiate, or have you always had a voice in the room for every piece of negotiations?
Yeah, we've never not been in the room. And as I just said, there comes a place in which... And as I just said, there comes a place in which the leaders of the body need to step in. It's not unusual at all. One of the deep respects I have for my Speaker is that as she participated in that and took that responsibility on, a huge one, she kept us in the room. We were constantly working with her, the Posse Caucus as well.
Thank you.